Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's planning board meeting. It is June 10, 2025, 2 past 7:00. So in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the planning board will meet or is meeting on Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall, meeting room 124. That's this room. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt remote connection. My name is Gary Sullivan. I'm the acting chair tonight, and Chris Monford's absence. With us is our associate member, Gary Searle, our newest member, Dan Seeger, Chad Peck, Melissa Mayo, our planning board, sorry, our planning board, our town planner, Rich McCarthy, and our administrative assistant, Betsy Fugel. On the docket tonight, we have a 7 o'clock public hearing for 210 Dedham Street, The Horse Restaurant. So, Dan, would you like to read that into the record, please?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 40A, and the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310-6.9, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a special permit application for the property located at 210 Dedham Street. The applicant, Boston Signs and Graphics of Medfield, Massachusetts, is requesting a special permit to allow the installation of a new wall-mounted sign larger than 20 square feet and a new freestanding sign larger than 12 square feet. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference assessor's map, 19 block 69, lot 22. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the town and Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday.
Thank you very much. So now we have to motion open, right? That's how these things work?
No.
No?
Nope, it's open.
It's open. Great. Awesome. We're in.
It is. We have a representative online from Boston Signs and Graphics, so he's going to be explaining what The Horse is proposing to do.
Okay, great. So willing to have that person talk, is that Matthias?
It is.
All right, Matthias, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Matthias. I own Boston Signs and Graphics, and I've been working with nice folks over at The Horse on replacing the signage that was with the old brand name. The first sign is the wall-mounted sign and measures 12 by 2, so 24 square feet, and it's a high-density urethane sign, non-illuminated. The gooseneck lighting is currently there, and it's illuminating the sign that is there. And it would be a replacement similar in size to the sign that is already wall-mounted there. Any questions on that before we move on to the next one?
Any questions on this one?
Nope.
Nope, go ahead.
Great. The second sign, again, similar in size to what is currently there. It's a non-illuminated aluminum composite material signed with aluminum cut out of the brand The Horse, as well as a silhouette of The Horse. It would just be black and white, and it would go on the corner of 115 and 1A.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns about either of these two signs?
The freestanding sign, is that different than the one that's up there now? I'm not sure if the one that's up there, if you're familiar with that one. I don't know if it's temporary or if that would just be put on a new stand.
Yeah, great question. It is, if we would build a new structure, what is currently there are PVC posts. We would switch it over to metal posts. And what is currently there right now, the image that you saw there, it does say The Horse, and that's temporary signage that is covering up the old sign on the lower right-hand side of the screen that you're sharing. That wasn't put up by us. That was there when I went to get a site survey.
Is there illumination on that, on that one, or just the one attached?
I think it's on the ground.
Yeah, landscape illumination.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see it there. Good.
I like the gooseneck lighting that's on the building.
Yep.
I think that's already there now, I'm pretty sure, but it just, it looks nice.
It is, yeah. You're correct.
I mean, it looks proportional.
I eat here on Saturday night and notice the temporary signs.
Yeah.
Saturday night, too.
We were there at the same time.
Just on different sides of the sign problem.
Yeah. All right, any other comments? This is pretty, pretty straightforward, in my opinion.
Yeah, it'll be better than the banner sign.
Is the footprint on the building from the old sign, it just seems like there's a lot of wasted space on that sign with no lettering. The, so you've got, what is the, the, when you calculate the sign size, is it the whole black background?
Yeah, it's the whole.
Okay. Is it covering up something that's a flat surface on the exterior of the building from the previous sign? Is that why, any particular reason why the amount of black to either side is just as big as the lettering in the middle?
Yeah, we're replacing the, basically the, in size, we're replacing the sign size that is currently there, so I'm sure there's feet on the building that we want to cover up.
Okay. So it's the same size as what was there before?
Correct.
Just instead of the horse and carriage, it is the horse.
And there's a little detail on either side, too, so it's not just flat black, which is nice.
Okay. Okay.
Was it public?
Oh, yeah. We'll open it up to public comment if anybody has, either online or in person, we're happy to hear comments.
If there's nobody online, then we'll call them.
Okay. Not seeing anybody live either. So we can close the public hearing?
Yep.
And then vote. So I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we move forward to approving, vote for approval?
Yeah, and Gary?
Yeah.
No, he has, he has a vote tonight.
Am I voting tonight?
Yeah, he gets a vote, special permit.
And I approve as well.
Okay, great. So what do we have to do to vote it in?
So you have a draft decision in your pocket.
Right on. You can tell how much I pay attention.
Okay.
Oh, it's, it's different when you're doing it yourself.
I think, is it, is it Norfolk?
So let's, yeah, let's take a minute to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
Oh, is it Norfolk, Mass? Oh, good question. All right.
Betsy, on page three of the draft decision?
Page three?
Yeah, voting members?
Yes.
You have Gary Sullivan on here twice.
Oh.
Well, we, you know, we like him extra.
We really like Gary, so.
No favoritism, though.
Apparently, there's a little bit.
All right, we'll fix that.
They eliminate anyone's name at the time?
Um, Chad's not on here.
Oh. Oh, wow.
Sorry, Chad.
Wow.
He just started kicking me out.
All right, well, how about that? That was.
That will be corrected.
Yeah.
So that would, you'd add me and then also?
Yeah, Gary.
I can add Gary Sullivan, Gary Searle. Sorry.
Seconded. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Searle, is aye. We are all aye. Right, because you can vote on this one. Awesome. Okay. Great. Moving on, it's not quite 7:15.
Thank you, Matthias. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll send you a copy of that recorded, that recorded decision tomorrow.
Yeah, two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two minutes. Do you want to be super efficient?
Yep.
All right. The RFPs are in for peer review consultants. Dan and Chris are planning board representative. David Axberg and Mike Brogan are for the zoning board of appeals. Josh Lynn, Jock King, all the schedules were not, July 8 is the earliest we could meet to review the proposals, and we received two, one from PAR and one from Beta.
Okay. Awesome.
Got a minute left?
Got a minute left. All right. So the CPC rep, I would be willing to do that again. I would actually prefer if I could do that for one more year. I'll give it up. Everybody's cool with that. Can I nominate myself?
No, somebody needs to nominate.
I would nominate Gary Sullivan.
I appreciate that, Chad.
Be our CPC rep.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Somebody's, all right. It's been seconded, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Searle, your opinion?
Aye.
Great. Let's get this started. Okay. What do we have for Norfolk Senior Center?
Oh, yes.
We'll let our audience enter the room.
The floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Chairman. For the record, Rick Udrow with United Consultants. Here online this evening is Carlos Quintel with United Consultants as well. At the last hearing, we had given the board a presentation of the project, which basically consists of the construction of a pavilion located in this general vicinity here and the reconstruction and expansion of the parking lot. We provided the board with the design plan for the layout, construction, drainage, stormwater drainage for the parking lot site, lighting. We did have an opportunity to meet with the planning department as well as the Beta Review Engineer. Since your last hearing, we've revised the plan set to address the comments from Beta, which are down to a handful, some of which they recommend that the board address, and some were, such as preparing a stormwater pollution prevention plan and a notice of intent to be a condition of approval prior to construction and signing of the operation and maintenance plan agreement as a responsible party by the town, as the owner of the property, again, putting that as a condition of the, of an approval. And then there were a couple items for the planning board to decide that Beta had outlined. We can certainly go through them if you like, or if you'd like to hear from Beta as to any comments they may have. I may leave that up to you.
If we have.
Steve Lee is on.
Yep. Steve, if you would be so kind to walk us through this and give us your, your opinions and comments here.
Good evening. Yeah, so as Rick had said, most of the comments have been resolved. There were a couple items that we left to the planning board as far as, you know, or items that would be done prior to the submission of final plans, such as the signing of the O and M plan, stuff like that. One of the items was, and I believe this was said in the first meeting, they provided a photometric plan. There is a small amount of light spilling into the right-of-way on that photometric plan, and that it has something to do, one of the regulations in the bylaws indicates a wood candle output not to exceed a certain amount under the light source and not to exceed a certain amount at the property lines. We just wanted to note that there were instances where the light spilled into the right-of-way. We understand that the, the lights in question, I believe, are existing, so that, we didn't see that as a huge of an issue engineering-wise. That was more just, we wanted to highlight that and, and ask the planning board if they, they have any opinion on that. Having light spill into the right-of-way is pretty standard at times, but they addressed all other items as far as additional plantings, you know, and a lot of our items in the stormwater report were addressed, as I mentioned, the operation and maintenance calculations were all provided, so there really wasn't a lot of outstanding items for us to address.
Okay.
The applicant has addressed them. And we actually, and there's one another, there are some existing structures on site, and it's, it's a pretty standard practice that just at the end of construction, these structures be cleaned or make sure they're in operating order prior to closeout, because existing water quality structures are being used, but aside from that, all items were addressed.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So on the waivers, I think we went through those last time, and I don't think there were any concerns from the board, right? From what I recall, we were, we were fine with all the waivers.
I do have a question, though, about the, like, the light spilling into the right-of-way. Is that because, is that because it's reusing existing poles, and that's just where it is?
Actually, that would be a new pole and fixture at the location of where there currently is a light.
Okay.
And it's basically, Betsy, if you could go to the last page, I believe it is?
Is that it, Rick?
No, there's one more right there.
It is.
So that light spillage issue is right here, the site driveway in with the intersection of Medway Street, and then we're at Zeros out here. So that's where the location of it is, as would typically be the case in a subdivision road, the board would more than likely request that we would provide a light for the intersection.
Right.
So in essence, there's a light here currently, we're replacing that light, and that's just where the, you know, the, the lighting dynamics are for that. So again, we're not, you know, up and down the street in other locations, it's, it's contained at the location of the site entrance.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Are there any lights on Medway Branch? Trying to think.
I know, I've never driven down there at night.
I know. I have, but trying to recall, are there any streetlights on that?
I don't know off the top of my head, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, I don't think so.
There's one that's been parked out for over 10 years.
Okay.
It's concerning energy.
All right, so that's the lighting. All right, should resolve, should resolve.
And that, cleaning the structures, that, that's not something we need to condition or anything, right? That's the, the water quality structures, that's just something that just gets done, right?
It does get done, but we, if you wanted to, we could add as a condition.
Yeah.
Add it.
Just to be, just, just so we're all clear.
Yeah, it's something that typically happens before an ASB would be turned in for, you know, approval by the board. It would be typical to have that done, but whereas this is an existing operational site, I think, you know, having the condition wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
The two levels here in the signage and lighting section, SL1, but there's a table right above that, that has basic maintained illuminance and then enhanced security illuminance. But I think at the last meeting, there was a resident that mentioned, I believe it was in 2020, there was some changes with the lights. They were, they're brighter now, and I'm not sure if we need enhanced security illuminance, so I guess we can probably talk about that together here, because it's, it's a lot brighter with the enhanced security illuminance versus the basic and the lighting. When I looked through all of my notes from our last meeting, the lighting was the most consistent feedback that we got from the butters, amongst other things, but that was consistently a challenge.
Yeah, so from that perspective, we can't, what are our options if we wanted to pursue those to, to put some sort of?
Luminance control?
Or like, you know, I think we discussed the auto-off thing that may or may not have been working correctly for some time.
So it's changed, I believe, so the new lights seem to be more of what you, like, what we probably have in our homes, where they turn on at dusk and turn off at dawn, but they were supposed to be, according to that settlement from years ago?
Yep.
They were supposed to be turned off, I believe, if I remember correctly, 8:00 p.m., unless there was some special event.
Right.
So that's, it sounds like maybe the type of light has changed.
So they, they changed, they put in LED lights back in 2020, so that, so that fixture type, obviously, the LED is different than what was there in the original lights that were.
And they were made on all night. They never shut. That's the issue.
I do know, yes, they, now, I do understand, driving by there last night, that the photocell...
They were off last night.
Right. So the photocell was changed, and they were off last night.
As of Friday, this past Friday, they installed time clocks.
Just a timer.
Which is the way it's, was supposed to have been for the last 25 years.
Okay.
Prior to that, they were on all night, which was a nuisance to the neighbors, based on a photocell. It was supposed to be based on a time clock, and then some were supposed to have motion detector overrides.
Well, I appreciate that. We'll, we'll get to public comment after this. Thank you for the, for the information, though.
So in terms of the two levels, in terms of lighting fixture, luminance?
So, Rick, you prepared a lighting plan. In there, does it talk anything about, like, photos, the, the control of the lighting, like timers, photocells, or?
No.
So that's out of the scope, outside the scope of your project, then?
Correct.
Okay.
But certainly, you know, the conditions there for the, the lights to be turned off, I don't think that there's anything here requesting for that to be amended.
Yeah, it sounds like the DPW is currently correcting the issue, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't part of the scope of this project. It's, it's obviously an ongoing issue with the existing lighting. Seems like the DPW is working on a solution, and that would carry over to this project as well.
Correct.
Yeah, the intent is to, to move forward, that the lights go off, and not to remain on.
No, that's a waste of, that's a complete waste of energy.
And a nuisance to neighbors.
And a nuisance, right, to a place.
Yeah, the question about the two different, I don't know if I have a...
I was just thinking, if we're going to be replacing one of the lights that's there, maybe we could do the lower luminance, knowing that one of the folks that came to our meeting last time was directly across the street.
Yeah.
Oh, you're, you're saying at the, at that front entrance, where you're getting the spill over, replace it from the enhanced to the basic?
Yes.
Gotcha. So there's, there's lighting there, it's just not, it's at 0.2 illuminance versus 0.5?
It's 0.5. So is that something we want to ask Rick to do? Is it a board?
I think, I think that would probably help at least, you know, at least one neighbor that was across the street at our last meeting, who said, I believe she said it was like looking over Gillette Stadium, when she looks out her front window, so if there's something we can do there, I think that would be helpful. It's not, I don't, can't imagine that's a big security risk down Medway Branch in the evening, but if you guys disagree.
No, I, I think there's no streetlights there right now, right? So you're gonna, any illumination will kind of highlight that entryway?
Mm-hmm.
You know, make cars coming in or coming out visible? That, that feels like a safe thing, you know, there's, right? There's no concerns with not having a brighter light at the entryway, right?
No.
Right, so.
I'm sure we can talk with the lighting company if it was the board's preference to have it, the two, I believe it's 0.25.
0.2.
Candle, 0.25 is the board's allowance at the property line.
Gotcha.
And we could certainly have them shield that, too.
Yeah.
To make sure that happens, if that's the board's preference?
Yeah, I think so.
And the neighbor's preference?
Like, let's just make this as, like, let's take the situation that's there, and, and since we're gonna replace some things, let's try to get it closer to what that original agreement was, was like, and try to minimize light overflow into other yards. Any other questions, concerns?
that was across the street at our last meeting, who said, I believe she said it was like looking over Gillette Stadium, when she looks out her front window. So if there's something we can do there, I think that would be helpful. It's not, I don't, can't imagine that's a big security risk down Medway Branch in the evening, but if you guys disagree.
No, I think there's no streetlights there right now, right? So you're gonna, any illumination will kind of highlight that entryway, you know, make cars coming in or coming out visible. That, that feels like a safe thing, you know, there's, right? There's no concerns with not having a brighter light at the entryway, right?
No.
Right, so.
I'm sure we can talk with the lighting company if it was the board's preference to have it, the two, I believe it's 0.25.
0.2.
Candle, 0.25 is the board's allowance at the property line.
Gotcha.
And we could certainly have them shield that, too.
Yeah.
To make sure that happens, if that's the board's preference.
Yeah, I think so.
And the neighbor's preference.
Like, let's just make this as, like, let's take the situation that's there, and since we're gonna replace some things, let's try to get it closer to what that original agreement was, was like, and try to minimize light overflow into other yards. Any other questions, concerns? And there's no concerns from Beta on stormwater management, which is good.
Says standard not met next to it.
There's a waiver.
You gotta sign it.
Oh, okay.
That'll be signed by the town. So any property owner, it's a standard as part of the stormwater management bylaw, you have to sign it. We have it in the, in the conditions?
Yeah.
That's where it says. I'm not sure we have it in there.
Was in there somewhere.
Very good this, really today. Hmm. Something here. Gotcha. Don't need a while. Missed that.
I don't see that in the conditions.
There's, well. Yeah, I don't see it either. What the heck? All right. So I have to add the SWIP, the illicit discharge, to the conditions of the permit.
And then we were gonna add?
Well, we would add the, the lighting.
Clean, clean the structures and.
Clean the structures.
And the lighting.
Yeah.
At the, just the lighting at the entrance?
Yeah, that, that light at the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
So that's four.
Um, I did note that there were some concerns in one of the letters. I actually didn't write down who had this concern, but it was really about, it was, they were environmental concerns, air pollutants essentially from new asphalt, I believe is what it was. Maybe we can just get, well, I guess we can just wait for the public, because they're probably here to talk about their questions, and then we can address that, so that I'm not misstating it. But I thought that was a good question.
Anybody have any other questions?
Nope.
I don't. Okay, we can move on to.
Open it to the.
Public comment, open it to the public. So you'll need to grab a microphone, there's one right there. State your name and address. Try, try to keep it timely, you know, three minutes, five minutes would be perfect. But feel free to, to give us your comments.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, Dave Luce, 15 Pondview Road. In the original decision, there was a condition about no more than 25% of the coverage being impervious, and I'm wondering if this was addressed in this? I think that's an important role. I haven't heard anything. I was, I'm late to the party, but want to know that.
Yes, um, do you want to?
We, we had that up last night.
We did, yeah. Mr. Goodrill, I believe you said it was 23 or 24%.
Yeah, if you go to the cover sheet, that's, he'll show the.
So the idea is to take the existing parcel and add to it this parcel that the town owns, and the combination of those two parcels will render the impervious about 20, just 23.8%. So just about 24%. So we included a little ability for them to expand in the future if they needed to do something relatively small.
Thank you. Any other comments?
That's ready to come for you.
Ron Burke, 31 Tucker Road. I had asked for a table to be put up on the screen. Was that allowed or not allowed?
Um, yeah, if you want to, we can put it up real quick if it's not gonna be that big of a deal.
I think it's in the folder.
It's in the folder.
Are you talking about the one with the other towns and the square footage?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's in the folder.
So the, the point I'd like to make is that the plan is to go from 32 parking spots to 90 parking spots. I think that's excessive. The last meeting, I pointed out that the town hall and the library are buildings that are for public use, they're roughly four times the size of the senior center, and they have less than 90 parking spots. So to further reinforce that, I, I did a survey of other senior centers in bordering towns, and I put together this table. And the Medfield is 9,000 square feet. Pardon me, I'm a senior, I need my glasses.
Can you zoom in?
They have 86 feet, 86 parking spaces.
There you go.
Franklin is a relatively new senior center, 18,000 square feet, 75 spaces. Foxborough is a senior center that is, I think, gonna be eventually replaced, but it's, it's closest in size to Norfolk at 5,684. Walpole is a relatively new senior center, 13,000 square feet. When you look at the number of parking spaces in those senior centers, it works out to an average of 190 square feet per parking spot. If you were to extrapolate that to the Norfolk Senior Center, which is 5,600 square feet, the number of parking spaces would be 29.4, which is roughly equal to what you have now. If you did it based, that same extrapolation based on town buildings, it would be only 17 and a half or 17 spaces. If you look at the zoning bylaws, there's a calculation for the minimum number of spaces, and that works out to 18 or 20. So I believe that 90 is wildly excessive for the use for the site, for the location of the site in a residential neighborhood. It will, you know, lead to environmental impacts that were brought up a few minutes ago. We have the, you know, we all know the negative impacts of parking, asphalt parking lots, heat island effects, stormwater runoff that can be polluted, groundwater that can be polluted with oils and heavy metals, et cetera. There was also discussion here earlier about town maintenance of the stormwater, storm, the clean water, stormwater equipment. You know, the town doesn't have the funds to maintain a streetlight. Are they going to have the funds to continuously maintain these systems? So I think it's a poor investment for the town to build such a large parking lot. It doesn't belong in a residential district. It has no benefit to the residents of that district. It has no secondary benefits to other groups or facilities in town. So I think that there is clearly times when they fill their lot, they do have a gravel lot area that I think they installed improperly, but that's a separate subject. But they do have an overflow lot on the property that could be used in those rare circumstances where they need additional parking, and that should be more than sufficient. So for all those reasons, my summary is that the 90 spots is excessive, and it should be limited to no more than what's there now, roughly 32. I personally would support the notion of increasing the number of handicap spots, if that's necessary for the, you know, the type of use. But the quantity of parking spaces is adequate now, does not need to be increased. Thank you.
Appreciate the comment. I appreciate the research that you did here. I'll just make a quick note that our parking bylaws are based off of minimums.
Correct.
Right? And so the idea there is to make sure we have enough parking at minimum in projects that we approve, with the expectation where if there's a demonstrated need, we would be willing to allow that to increase. So I, I get what it's like to be a neighbor and have things going on that you don't like, so completely empathetic towards this. But I think the demonstrated need that was shown to us by the senior center warrants that build-out for the parking lot. We want to make sure that environmental concerns are addressed, that lighting concerns are addressed, and I think that's what we've been working on here. You know, some of these towns, hey, maybe, if you could turn back the clock 30 years, maybe we put the senior center in the middle of town where there's more shared parking available, so we don't have as much of a need for, but that's not the case. So I do thank you for this information, but yeah, we, we are kind of working with a demonstrated need, not constant, but occasional full use of that parking lot. We need to make it a safer, you know, spot for people that want to use the senior center to enjoy it.
I will say, too, I did some just quick online searches when I was looking at these numbers, just to compare one to the other.
Yep.
And we had just, in Norfolk, we had just completed our master plan a year ago. So in there, we noted that 40%, or I should say MAPC noted, 40% of households in Norfolk include a person 60 years or older. In the other towns, the information that I found, Medfield, is 20% people over 60. And Walpole is a few years old now, it was 2020 data, but over 60 was 21.7. It's not exactly apples to apples, but based on that, you know, it looks like we have a significant amount more seniors. I don't know exactly what the numbers are, the 40% of our households include, I don't know what that number is. But it stuck out to me that it would, it seems as though we have more seniors in our town at a first glance. I also reached out to a friend that works at the Medfield Senior Center and asked about their parking situation. She said they, they also are at capacity limits on days when, when they have larger events. Walpole, I've actually been there on those days, and I had nowhere to park. I actually found the last spot in the parking lot and then saw somebody driving in circles, so I left my spot so that person could go in. So they also have parking issues. And I will say, the person from the Medfield Senior Center who works there lives in Norfolk, and said, "In Norfolk, you absolutely need to do something about that parking lot. It's dangerous for the seniors."
Yeah, the gravel lot is dangerous. It's not, it, yeah. It's, it's not a long-term solution. It's a short temporary solution that's lasted probably too long.
Mm-hmm.
And then also, Rick, what was the building square foot? Because it was mentioned by the public, it was 5,600, but in the calculation, it was 3,900.
Well, the, the building commissioner actually went through the calculations.
Right.
Provided us with, with a letter, and I believe it's inclusive of the basement floor level, where there's some additional space. So that's the difference.
Okay, that's the difference, okay. Because the calculation showed one, one.
And the rear deck base, the outside deck.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because the calculation was one space per 50 square foot for, for place of assembly, which came out to be 78 spaces, and then six handicap, which got to 84. And I think you were proposing 90?
Yeah, so, Betsy, if you can go to the plan sheet, we can. Sheet two, I believe it is. Oh, I take sheet three. Yeah, so the parking count is the eight handicap, and there's, I believe.
Eight handicap, okay.
Yeah, 84. A little difficult to read.
84, okay.
I just, I just want to make sure I have the numbers. I can look at it on here.
Yeah, I mean, the Beta report still, it says 84 regular.
84, yep.
84 regular, six handicap for a total of 90. And the minimum was 78, based upon the calculations from the building commissioner.
Correct, but that does not include the handicap spaces.
Right, right.
Any other public comment? Feel, is that mic working, Betsy?
It is now.
Give a couple more.
I've been going, hi, I'm Margot Tufts, I'm at 27 Medway Branch. We're the ones that have been trying to get the light sticks for about five years, so I'm a little frustrated, as you all know. But I guess maybe this process got, got something moving, so, and we have a, a new, it actually wasn't the DPW, it was the building, the new building person.
Great.
Tim.
Great.
That appeared to get things going. I did some work on the census, not to beat it to death, but I went on census.gov, and I got numbers for 2024, I think it was, or 2023. And of the almost 12,000 people in this town, 2,300 were 60 or over. So that's not a 40% number, so.
No, that's what I was saying, it's not apples to apples, because 40% of households in Norfolk include a person over 60.
Okay, that was a little deceiving.
Yes.
The other thing I wanted to just bring up, and is, we had delivered a letter to you folks in May that listed a lot of concerns, and we would really request a written response to that, before any action is taken, any final action on this project is taken. We really want a written response to that. I think it's getting diluted a bit, and I would like to see the responses, so I would appreciate that. Also, I want to bring up that there was a legal agreement signed with us Butters back in 2000, and that legal agreement limits the parking to 30 spaces, of which there's 32. So that needs to be addressed as well. It's a huge issue.
According to town council, that's not correct.
You're telling me right now that we need more parking than Walpole with a, with a center that's four times, three to four times the size? Doesn't make sense to me.
I think it depends how many seniors are actively, you know, that are active members.
And the activities.
And the activities.
The two people that came in and spoke, talked about luncheons.
Right.
And other activities.
But I think those other centers have those activities as well.
They do, but they run out of parking.
Yeah. But to say we need more parking than, than a facility that's three to four times the size of ours is quite a bit excessive.
We're not setting the parking limit. Our building commissioner set the parking, minimum of 78. So we're not setting that. That's set by them.
But the park, the parking, Karen, if you want to step forward, the, the new parking number is coming based on need and future need, to plan for the growth of seniors in town that are aging in place. You know, it's one of those things that perhaps some seniors in town don't utilize as services, but there is availability for parking for additional program for seniors to have something to age in this community over time. So to not provide that would seem to be, you know, somewhat short-sighted and disturbing some of the seniors.
Right.
Which I know I certainly will be. I certainly value the, the value of a senior center for the aging population, for those that aren't able to socialize in other ways. There's many people who stereotype and stigmatize counts on agings, but there are a lot of.
We all know that. We know that. I worked for a nonprofit for 25 years of my career.
Okay.
I am not prejudiced against.
No, you, no.
I'm a senior myself. I just think it's excessive what you're proposing.
All right, so let's bring everything through the chair.
Just one more point, though. That legal agreement did not say that is to be limited to those number of parking spaces.
Yes, it does. I have it right in front of me.
No, it doesn't.
Would you like to read it?
Yeah, I read it. And then we had council read it.
Okay.
And they determined it wasn't.
So Norfolk's town council has advised us that there is no, there's no legally binding limit to parking, so that's, that's been.
Well, we are in disagreement of that.
That's fine.
Okay.
But we have to go off of the guidance that we have available to us.
So you're not, so the legal agreement we signed is null and void, you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it, it has nothing to do with parking spaces.
I believe what he said was, there was nothing in there that said it couldn't be amended.
The terms of that settlement agreement were met previously.
Yes.
Those conditions, that 30 was not a limitation going forward.
And we don't have town council here, so we can't actually get into legal disagreements, because I, we don't have anybody here on staff that could answer those, matter of fact.
Okay, thank you.
Just to quickly revisit the point about the letter, is there anything in that letter that you feel is not being adequately answered here? Is there still a need for us to respond?
I would like a response in writing. I, you know, I'm a little distrustful, as, based on the history of what's gone on. So I feel, and we all feel as Butters, that we would like it in writing.
We would have to generate a letter here in open meetings, so if, if a board member wants to take that up, we can consider it, but that's not usually what we, what we do. Is there anything else that we can answer for you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Is this, is this working?
Yep.
Okay, good.
It's working.
My name is Karen Edwards. I'm the director of the Norfolk Senior Center. I am also a town resident. I live at 6 Canterbury Lane, and I grew up at 86 Rockwood Road, so I have about 60 years here in town, and have seen the growth from the time that I was younger or even was still living at home. I'm not a mathematician. I don't know anything about square footage or number of spaces, I mean, the things that, like, for instance, that the gentleman had on the table. But I can tell you that the very last week of May, one cookout barbecue, we had probably 70 cars in that lot. The regular spaces were full, the gravel spaces were full. People were parking along the side of the gravel where there weren't really spaces, but they made them. People were parked in the fire lanes, and they were parked in the back where there really isn't spaces as well. That's not a huge anomaly. To me, it doesn't matter, and again, I'm not professional square footage or whatever, but to me, it matters that the people that are 16 or over that come to the senior center are safe, and that they can access programs and services without being in danger in the parking lot. And I just really don't know how to convey it other than I see it. It happens every day. Actually, the fire chief, Chief Kenny, was there the day of the barbecue, and he agreed with me on the situation was completely unacceptable out there at that minute. So, all it takes is for a couple of classes to overlap with each other, a couple of fitness classes overlapping with an art class, and we're overlapping with a lunch, and you've got chaos out there.
Yeah, and you showed that with the pictures last time. This is the demonstrated need that we're talking about, where, you know...
So, I guess I'm saying I don't agree that it's an excessive ask. Do we get 90 people every day? Maybe, probably not. But we get 70, at least on a regular basis. And I'm sorry, I'm there all day long, and I see, and I'm sure there's people here who can vouch for the fact that they've had some experiences in the parking lot as well. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I see a request for public comment from Sarah online. Sarah, if you want to go ahead and unmute, feel free to...
I'm Sarah Simon. We are the owner of 33 Tucker Road in Norfolk. So, I have personally seen the agreement that was written up, and just, I just have to make note of this, that it did say in the agreement that there were only 30 spots, that that was the limit. I'm not going to go over that again, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, somebody else said it. It does say that in the agreement. I also wanted to ask a question. How many people are allowed within the building according to the fire marshal? Because the building seems far too small to allow 90 people within that building.
We can get an answer if, what's the Hockem seat, do you know, off the top of your head? It's got to be more than 90, I mean, just...
We put at least 60 some odd people in the main room regularly for lunches and things like that. I can't speak for the, there's the library area that holds people, there's the downstairs, there's the big area that holds people, which would be like another 30 or so people doing fitness classes, servicing at the time.
All right. So, we don't have the numbers for you right now, but, you know...
Can you get the number from the fire marshal, please?
Yeah, we can.
That would come from the building.
That would come from...
The building inspector's office.
Building inspector's office, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we'll just cross-check that, and clearly if, but, you know, then there's the whole cookout thing, outdoor space, so, but we will, we'll get that answered.
It's also much bigger than it seems on the outside. I've been there multiple times. There's the whole finished basement.
I've been inside of it. I've been inside of it.
Right. So, the biggest room, or at least where I've done meetings there, I mean, there were easily, let's see, yeah, probably about 60 or so that could sit in just that one room. And then there's the whole finished basement, the library, the other rooms as well. But, so it's definitely more than that.
We're not going to spend too much time on the whether there's space. We will get that answer, just, you know, for our own clarification, but let's move forward, assuming that...
Okay. I have some other things I just wanted to say.
Sure.
So, like, I just wanted to make sure there are certain, like, there's certain lighting that's being added. I think, like, at the docking area and the pavilion, our house is, you know, right behind the pavilion, and I just want to make sure that those lights aren't going to be pointed, like, out towards our house.
Those are downlights, right?
And have more of the downward...
They're all downward facing lights, so you're in the clear there.
And is that written within the, you know, within your plan?
It is on the light spec sheet, yeah. What do we call that?
There's cut sheets.
Should be on the cut sheet.
It's on the cut sheet, thank you.
Should be on the lighting cut sheet, but they are downward facing. So, they're directional. We ran into a similar thing with the Kingfield Middle School. Those lights there were previously extremely bright, pointing out, and then when we redid the lighting on that, we made sure that those were downward as well. And I know that the Butters were much appreciative.
Okay. And you said that the lighting, you were going to discuss having the lighting be at, like, lower lumens. Is that within the whole parking lot as well, or is it just for the...
No, that was just the entrance to the street. But what is being worked on outside of the scope of this is the, is the, I'm not sure.
Timer.
It's a timer, some photocell auto on-off thing. It's apparently working now, so we'll just be sure to make sure that it has continued to be...
And how do the, like, so if there's a problem with it, like, there has been for the last five years, how do people get in contact with somebody? Who do they contact to make sure that it's not like a five-year problem again?
It's the town's building department.
Yeah, it's...
No?
No.
I'm sorry, facilities department. Yep.
Call Town Hall, you know, where, they're all pretty nice here, I think. Maybe one or two are pretty mean, but most people are nice. And, you know, they'll get you in contact with the right person.
But it is the building department fixing it now, correct?
Facilities.
Facilities.
So, to recap on that, the facilities department is currently fixing that. It is not part of the scope of this project. The scope of this project is to replace the lighting with the lighting plan, and we were looking at downgrading that light that's at the street to eliminate the spillage, or minimize, minimize to eliminate the spillage into the street.
One other question I had, is there anything that, you know, like, are you going to add additional trees or anything with the additional lighting that's going to be added, you know, so the Butters aren't inundated with more light?
I don't think there's any extra trees going in, and this would, this lighting plan would actually result in less light escaping the property than is there currently because of the way that the downward lights are structured, so...
Except for the, are you, Sarah, are you referring to the pavilion when that goes in with the lighting over there?
Yes.
I think I saw that in her letter.
And also, also the parking area for the van.
So, Sarah's letter is the one that we got just a couple hours ago. You may not have seen it yet.
I haven't seen that one yet.
But she was concerned about screening the van that's parked on the property, and also the lighting for the pavilion. And Karen, come on up.
Karen, feel, yeah. Thank you.
So, yes, the van is parked where it is now. Are we sure this is working? The van is parked where it is now because the van has been trapped behind in that gravel area and unable to get out to take people places. So, that is a temporary place for the van because when we have a bigger parking lot, we will have room to have that van out in its own parking space that's big enough for the, for the van. And then also, we have a GATRA van as well that we use, which is currently being stored down at the Old Town Hall garage for the winter and also the summer at this point. But we'd be able to bring that one up as well and park it if we have, when we have the new parking lot.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any other public comments, questions, concerns? Go ahead.
Bruce Tufts, 27 Medway branch. We've already talked about some of these issues, but I just want to go on record. We discussed the lighting, and obviously, that's a major concern for us because we're right across the street. I don't want to reiterate, but I wanted to go on record, is that the fixture specifications and the lighting controls are missing on the site plan. I think, Keith, you have now addressed that, but we have not seen them. Okay? And the Norfolk zoning bylaws prohibit light glare projecting onto the public street. So, I know you talked about this, but supposedly, there can't be any glare going onto the street. So, we're recommending that you eliminate that fixture.
Fixure.
Thank you. But closest to the entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a clarification on glare, that word? I know this came up like years ago.
It did, and I know when we worked on, we worked on something recently, and it was more about the Butters property, but as far as, like, spilling over into the street, we haven't worked on anything that's defined what that means exactly in a very long time, I don't think. I don't remember it at all.
No. If it's directional lighting, how can it glare into anything? It's just going to...
It should just go down.
Asphalt and...
The older lighting did glare because...
Because it wasn't directional.
Wasn't directional.
Right.
This is parallel to the ground. It's going downcast on the ground. If you look at a light that's lit, that, if it's not glaring back in your face, you're going to see a light just lit, obviously, right? You go from dark to light, you see it. But if it's not glaring back at you, it's not glaring. These fixtures are going to be downcast to the ground. There's an intensity of them. They might be brighter, but they're still directionally down. They're not outward away from the property.
Brighter, but we also said...
Those can be, yeah, those can be dropped down at the street entrance.
Right, so that it will be, it won't be as bright.
Right.
At that one.
So, I think what we discussed with Rick was the combination of some shielding on the light and downgrading that one light from the, from the security to the basic.
Correct.
Should, should correct that issue at the, at the street. And, and you're right, controls are not, were not necessarily specified in there because those, you're connecting into the existing controls for automation.
So, that's more...
Which aren't working, and are, were not working and are being corrected.
Yes. Sample size of one night.
That was one night, so I'm not saying, but I drove by there, and I didn't see the lights pop on as I drove my vehicle, so that, but I was also told that it was corrected by...
Facilities.
By...
Friday night.
Yeah, DPW, I guess. I don't know if it's, somebody from the town...
Facilities.
Corrected it, so...
Somebody at the town, whether it's facilities or DPW.
Right.
Yes. It's a team effort.
It was a team effort.
I would think, though, if there are questions, if anybody in the, any residents have questions, I would probably go to facilities first, right? Is that what we agreed? Just to, or call the Town Hall and ask?
I mean, if it's a lighting issue...
Facilities or DPW?
I would contact, I would just contact the, because if it requires a, if it requires a special truck to come out...
Yeah, they could work together on that.
They don't, facilities doesn't necessarily have the truck with the lift.
Right.
So, then DPW's going to get involved, so...
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Any other public comments, Sarah?
You already spoke, Mr. Burke, so we're going to limit it to the three, okay?
Well, actually, Mr. Burke, can we maybe give him a little longer? If you're not going to talk about pollution, can you talk, can you go into a little more detail about what, you mentioned stormwater, and I believe air pollution, if I remember correctly, from the letter? I just want to get some clarification, so you get an answer on that.
I'd rather not, just because I'm not prepared to talk about that right now.
Okay.
But as a general rule, asphalt paving is bad for all of us. That's a common sense kind of thing. So, adding additional asphalt paving to our, into our neighborhood is no benefit to us or anybody else other than a few hours per year when they have overflow parking. The reason why I stood up is I wanted to clarify Margot's request for a response to the May 12 letter that we gave you. That May 12 letter outlined a number of concerns we had about the application process, about the waivers, and to notify you of the legal, of the settlement agreement and the terms within it, and also to notify you that in 2016, there was an earth removal project that was done contrary to the instructions in the last planning board decision. So, if you read the 1999 planning board decision, it says that no changes can be made to the site unless there is a public hearing. And that work was done without a public hearing. They damaged the environment by cutting down trees. They damaged the environment by removing gravel and fill, and therefore, they stomped on our rights as neighbors and Butters in doing that work without permit. So, we're looking for written clarification or written response from your board on why you're waiving, allowing a waiver of the impact study, for example. You know, we told you they're going from 32 to 90 spots. You heard the director talk about increased need over years and things like that. Obviously, going from 32 to 90 spots indicates there's a very large increase in use of that site. Therefore, it seems common sense that that would justify an impact study. Traffic study, back in 2003, DPW had a special permit hearing where they testified that they would put in a four-way stop sign and a sidewalk on Tucker Road.
Explain that to us when you write your letter? The waivers are addressed in the decision. Right. The decision will give an explanation as to why the waivers were granted.
Right.
Any other comments?
Dave Lutz, 15 Poundview Road. I think I finally get to pull my old man stuff because I've lived in town long enough that I think I've... stuff, because I've lived in town long enough that I think I've lived here longer than everyone else has been in town. When this project was built, it was fairly controversial because we were citing a town facility in a residential district. I think what you're seeing here is a reaction to the fact that when that went in, there was an understanding of the size and scope of what was gonna happen. This is an expansion, a significant expansion of the size and scope of that. That's an important consideration. Because next time we try to do something somewhere else, who's gonna trust us as a town to not violate the expansion rules? The rules that were understood at the time of the agreement. There's a legal agreement which Rich has acknowledged that may not be applicable anymore. What's, what's going on with that? That's, that's problematic to me. So I just wanna say that I hope that the board considers this stuff when they make a decision and they write their actual conditions into the agreement that sets parameters going forward permanently.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any online? I think we're done. Yep. Okay. Any other, oh, we should, any other comments from the board?
No.
No. Accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Any additional comments?
I do not have any.
There were...
Uh, sorry.
There were some things that need to be amended in the decision.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So we have four conditions that need to be, or two that need to be added, two that need to be, or four that need to be added.
Right. The lighting condition, SWIP, listed discharge, signatures, clean the existing stormwater structure. The lighting needs to be adjusted at the...
Entrance.
Entranceway.
That was three, there was, there was four.
There was four.
Lighting.
The clean structures, light at entrance.
Clean structures and lighting at the entrance. Those are the four.
Was it the standards not met?
Wait, so what, what were your four?
Stormwater, the SWIP.
Yep, the SWIP.
Listed discharge.
Yep.
Clean structures.
Yep.
And then the lighting at the entrance.
And we can't condition, or it's not really in our purview to condition the lighting control, right? Because it's outside the scope of this.
That, no.
One light.
No, I'm saying...
The light, the operational lights?
The timing.
That you can do, yeah.
We could. It wasn't part of the scope of, of the original project.
Yeah, so we should condition just so it's met, right? Like that's, if it's working now, but it hasn't worked in five years, we kinda wanna make sure it's working.
Well, if, so, I mean, if you just adhere to the lighting the way it was in the settlement agreement, which the lighting was to be shut off at 8:00 PM, and then the timer switch may be overridden by use of a manual switch in the building.
Yep.
The manual switch may be used only when activities in the building continue after that time, and be switched off, activity's concluded, and the building is vacated. Lighting...
We wanna condition that that timer works, and that there is an actual switch that somebody can...
And the lighting on, and the lighting on the building, this motion activated. Can you continue with that paragraph? It goes a little further.
I interrupted him, so that's my fault.
That's okay.
Lights affixed to the building will also be governed by the timer and manual override, except they may also provide those lights to be activated by motion detectors for security purposes.
And they're on all the time. Yeah.
Do you have the ability to codify that as a condition? Like codify those...
That's what I was just thinking, is how do we, even if we have...
You will. If you wanna put that in there, we're gonna put it right into the decision. That's what, that's, I think, makes sense.
So that all should be existing, whether it's there or not.
It should be existing, so you're carrying forward.
What we could say is verify that it is working at the, verify that it is working...
Well, partially existing isn't it happens now, or that it is a current condition?
I'm sorry, can you carry on?
You're saying it's not happening now, but that doesn't mean it wasn't a condition in the...
No, no, I understand it was a condition, it just hasn't been met.
Right.
Correct.
But I think we should codify that again.
Correct. Carry that and put it into this decision.
Yep. Okay, so that's a fifth.
We'll just look at each other, yes. We know, we gotta, we gotta just write it, we'll just write that in.
It's not in there right now, I gotta put it in there.
You need to transfer that over.
So if you wanna vote that, and then we can add it.
I would actually, I would rather do that, honestly. Because I think we need to make sure, we do, I mean, if there was an agreement and it wasn't met for me, I wouldn't...
A Thursday meeting?
I thought we had a meeting two days.
We were gonna do everything tonight.
And see if we needed another one.
I have a place over for a Thursday.
I know, we did talk about it.
There's no meeting Thursday night.
We don't have a meeting Thursday night.
Are you around in July?
Yeah, I can be around for July.
Okay.
That's it, Rich, I'm not.
Okay. So then we will draft it, revise, and have it for you for the next meeting, which is July 8th. Can you see it?
Can we have it?
No. Wait, yes.
No?
No, that's right.
No, you don't wanna...
No, no, it is right.
Try to have it a little bit...
We'll have it ahead of time.
Yeah, so that was, because I wanna compare it to the old agreement and see if there's any gaps.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. That'd be awesome.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're not gonna vote on it tonight.
You're not voting on it tonight.
So we just...
That's it. Move on to the next agenda item.
Right. Public hearing's closed. We have our, you have your, your items.
Our work order to revise this decision.
Need a motion to continue?
Right.
Give it back, huh? Do you need a motion to continue? No.
No, no, no. No, you're not.
Hearing's closed.
Hearing's closed. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Great to see this many people.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Rick. All right, we're a little over 7:45, 15 Rockwood Road. Site plan approval, stormwater management permit for proposed construction of an eight-unit, two-story townhouse building and renovation of existing building into three apartments, which is continued from our May 20th meeting. Accept the motion to reopen and continue the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moving to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. What do we got?
Good evening, everybody. Jesse Aguilar, High Point Engineering, here on behalf of my client, Stefan Frye of Charles River Equity Partners, and our project architect, Eric Kavart of VMY Architects, here to discuss the continuation of the proposed townhouse project at 15 Rockwood Road, right on the north side of the Norfolk MBTA station. If you'll bear with me just a moment, get my presentation squared away.
I do have it up on the...
Oh, you do?
Behind you.
Oh, fantastic.
Does that work for you?
We have the PowerPoint, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to discuss the...
I think that's it, isn't it?
Um...
Oh, wait, hold on one second. Nope, sorry, I pulled up the room.
Almost ready.
Hold on.
No worries.
Is that there?
Oh. Well, like I said, I pulled it up. Hold on, hold on a second, let me just slide it over.
No. Even David didn't stay. There it is.
Why is that being funky on me?
Okay, yeah, so, second meeting of the planning board for 15 Rockwood Road. Next slide, please. All right, so just an update. On June 4th, we submitted a response to comments package to the town of Norfolk, as well as the Beta Group. And the Beta Group on June 9th, 2025, turned around with a second review letter attesting that all their comments from the first letter had been addressed in our response to comments package. Next slide, please. So this is the, this is the updated version of the site plan that I showed in draft form during the previous meeting, wherein we advanced the septic system design and we softened the radius of the continuation of the driveway from the, from the rear edge of the existing parking off the, off the south curb cut. And this was a request by the Norfolk Fire Department to soften that. They've, they've attested that they're satisfied with that geometry, as well as the location of the fire hydrant. We also, to address Beta's stormwater management concerns on the west side of the new eight-unit townhouse building, to eliminate a surface infiltration basin and continue a cobble swale around that side of the building, and, and have the start of that swale at the outfall from the proposed subsurface detention and infiltration system for stormwater at the west end of the, of the, of the driveway. Next slide, please. And this is just the same plan showing dimensions and typical, typical stacked parking configuration in front of one of the units. I will state as, you know, part of the revised site plan, we are, we are opting not to modify the, the north curb cut or the parking configuration, which I will discuss a little bit later. Next slide, please. So this is the, the modified landscape plan, which simply changes the layout configuration of the, of the ground covers and one slight relocation of a, of a light pole along the, along the south edge of the driveway. Next slide. This is the, this is the landscape configuration nearest Rockwood Road, which did not change since the, since the previous. Next slide, please. So getting back to the north curb cut, we did investigate reconfiguring the, the parking and, and driveway setup to see if we could feasibly enable cars to turn around and head out onto, onto Rockwood Road after parking on the site. The only way to really do that, given that the two parking spaces at the bottom of what's a pretty steep driveway are oriented east to west, would be to relocate that parking off the north edge of pavement, placing those spaces very close to the, to the, to the stone, the stone-sided swale that conveys the, the stormwater runoff for the entire site, at least insofar as it is, as it is not infiltrated underground, to the 18-inch culvert that crosses Rockwood and discharges to 14 Rockwood across the street. So, you know, this has its, it has a host of challenges associated with it. It would require adding over 300 square feet of additional impervious surface, and given the existing grade off the edge of the existing driveway, approaching the edge of the, of the channel, that parking would have to be constructed at around 10% slope, which is, which is rather unsafe, especially during winter conditions, where you have, you know, danger of slip and fall situations. It also doesn't offer any space for stormwater quality pretreatment or peak flow mitigation for the surface runoff that would be flowing south to north directly into the, into the channel. There's really, there's really no feasible way to capture it and treat it due to space and elevation constraints. We would also lose the snow storage capabilities that we have off the north side of that driveway, off that curb cut, and we would lose planting area. We are proposing a new tree planting and a new light pole base to illuminate the driveway there. Next slide. So I discussed late last week with Mr. McCarthy regarding some concerns from the DPW director regarding some ongoing surface flooding conditions that are occurring at 14 Rockwood Road across the street. And I was sent a, I was sent a drainage study that was done by PAR Corporation engineers in August 2019. They identified a couple of surcharge conditions in the town's pipe network, namely this one that runs west to east from Rockwood Road along the, the south side of the 14 Rockwood Road property that's seeing the ponding. So that property, I'm not sure if you have all seen it, but the, the culvert from, a culvert from Rockwood Road discharges into a timber-lined channel that conveys stormwater west to east into a manhole, you know, per the nomenclature of the PAR study, that's Manhole 729. The one upstream of it that we don't connect to is Manhole 731. So the surcharge condition that they're seeing is between 731 and 729, which is due to effects upstream of 731, which are not associated with anything going on at 15 Rockwood. So we believe that the ponding at 14 Rockwood is due to the surcharge condition, at least partially, of that pipe inhibiting flow off of 14 Rockwood to points downstream. So the yellow, the yellow highlight is the, is the municipal drain in Rockwood Road that, that extends across 14 Rockwood after pipe outfall, only has tangential effects on the integrity of the red main trunk line. Next slide.
Oh, I wanted to do it, sorry. All right, no more. Go to the next slide.
So there are some concerns that any development on 15 Rockwood would exacerbate the, the flooding conditions at 14 Rockwood. So what we did is we looked at a pre-existing versus proposed conditions analysis of the total stormwater runoff volume, not just discharge rate. We knew, you know, through, you know, our compliance with the Stormwater Management Handbook that MassGEP has published, that we were, that we were attenuating peak flows and not, not exceeding pre-development flow rates to our points of analysis, one of which was the inlet to this culvert. So for all of the design storms, from the two-year all the way to the 100-year storm, we're reducing flows to the existing culvert anywhere in the range from by 245 cubic feet under the two-year storm to just over 2,700 cubic feet for the 100-year storm. We're also reducing the amount of runoff that flows directly over land into Rockwood Road itself by a range of 151 cubic feet for the two-year to 645 cubic feet for the 100-year. And we do that by virtue of two subsurface infiltration systems. One larger one at the west end of the driveway, and another smaller one that picks up the rear half of the townhouse roof runoff, you know, with the, with the high-level overflow that connects to the, to the, to the cobble channel. But, you know, ultimately, you know, where, where... But, you know, ultimately, you know, we're infiltrating anywhere between 4,000 and almost 11,000 cubic feet of stormwater, depending on which storm you're looking at. So in terms of, you know, what is discharging off-site physically that is not infiltrated onsite? For the two-year, we're reducing that by 386 cubic feet total, and that volume that we're reducing it by goes up to 3,376 cubic feet for the 100-year storm. So, you know, we maintain that we are improving the conditions of the Rockwood Road drainage collection system and in turn would be improving the conditions seen at 14 Rockwood Road by virtue of allowing less runoff under the post-development condition than the pre-development condition to enter the municipal system. Next slide, please. I'm gonna let Stefan speak to this slide regarding the aesthetics of the building, and Eric can weigh in too.
I did this... Melissa, you would ask, you know, the rendering...
Can you just grab one of the mics?
Yeah.
Either...
Right here.
The handheld one's fine.
Okay.
If it's on. Thank you. Screen light on?
Oh. Oh, yeah.
So the rendering did not capture, like, the sort of exterior color scheme that I was trying to go for. So this is the old Clark Tavern in Medfield, right on 109, and this is pretty much similar to what I'm hoping to achieve at 15 Rockwood Road with a combination of cedar shingles and either clapboard itself and then painted, or fiber cement in a color that is similar or suitable that... And then, I think Jerry, you had mentioned that through your research...
I think the original color of 15 Rockwood Road was white.
Right. So 15 Rockwood Road, which will get a full exterior sort of rehab with a new roof and most likely new windows and new exterior trim and siding, would then...
We'll try to, you know, try to recapture what it looked like 100 and something years ago.
That's awesome. Was this... So I think I know where this is in Medfield. Was it previously yellow and it had a tarp over the roof for a long time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for a long time. Yep.
Yeah. It's so much better now.
Yeah. They did a really nice job. So it was really just the sort of cream-colored property that was the only thing that was there, and then they... These are all condos now, so...
And so that concludes the body of the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you or the public may have.
Great. Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I mean, the only comment I had is that it looks like the parking for the original building...
In the back? Is that what you mean?
No, the parking that... We were trying to get them so that they didn't have to back out into Rockwood.
Oh, yes.
That...
By the garage?
Yeah, that... We'd asked you to look into that solution, and it just doesn't look like a good solution.
Nope.
So I appreciate you doing the effort.
I'll just add, I have a large truck, and I probably the only... You know, right now, anyway, I'm the only one that probably goes down and then backs out, and it's not ideal, but people are usually courteous enough to see that you're trying to back out, and they stop and back out and, you know, along on your way to go. So it's not the greatest, but it's not the worst. So, and it's, I think, better than this, so...
Yeah, I appreciate you looking into it as an alternative, because it's what we'd asked you to do. I don't want to create another problem, and to me, this looks like creating a bigger problem than what's there.
I think we also need to appreciate the image shown is the car pulling out in front of a Mack truck.
Yes, it is.
So either solution...
That was just surrendipost.
Didn't even notice it until you just pointed it out. That's hysterical.
I noticed it earlier, but I didn't say anything.
Yeah. Not often in Norfolk will you see that. But the car on the right, for sure.
I have a question.
Just grab a microphone if you...
Oh, there you go. Oh, you get two. Okay, I don't need two. I was just wondering, how many parking spaces are you referring to in that area? Just one or two?
Two spaces.
Two spaces?
Yes. Yeah, so the spaces currently are oriented here and here.
And there is a fair amount of space, although it is kind of like on a hill.
Yeah, I know. I go by the road.
Yeah. I have an SUV, and my husband has a huge truck, and we've both parked side by side in there, and it's been, you know, there's a fair amount of space. It's just backing out into the road that's a little tricky.
I have, for the record, done a U-turn into the grassed area and been able to...
Yeah.
Pull up. But if there were two cars there, you'd never be able to do that, so...
Steve from Beta, do you have any extra comments or anything you want to add to this?
No. I pointed out all of our comments, quite literally all of them. They did an excellent job of addressing them, even the, you know, at one point they had the stormwater basin on the west side of the building, and they just altered the plans to get rid of it. And we think that was the right move, and so, yeah, I think this is a very sound plan and project.
Thank you for that.
And so, one last question. The dividers in the back that made me nervous last time, is there anything, any other solution, or is that the only... I know it's not a requirement, so it's not like we can force anything. I'm just wondering if you had thought about that anymore.
We did. We did look at it. Ultimately, with it not being a requirement, we decided to leave it as is. You know, this is a development of two-bedroom units, and they're going to be upstairs units, so they're not ideal for somebody with ADA needs. So I don't know that it's going to be a huge issue, but I do, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm sure all of the people that buy them will appreciate the privacy.
Right. It's a little bit of a trade-off, but yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. We're good to... Yes, sir.
Open it up to...
Oh, yeah, sorry. We will now open it up for public comment. Seeing another person online.
Well, Jerry was part of the public.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Answering question. All right, so we're all set to close the hearing?
Are you sufficiently... In terms of stormwater, to demonstrate that they're not creating an impact...
They're making it better, not worse.
Okay.
Numbers usually don't lie like that.
Well, I just, you know, I put it... Just I put a condition in relative to that, so I wanted you to feel sufficiently...
I appreciate that condition. And that's all going back to the DPW, that information? Or that's what you talked to them in that meeting, right?
Yes.
So presuming you're satisfied, we'll take the condition out of the permit.
I'm just gonna read the... Reread this real quick before...
Well, there's other conditions too, but...
Yeah. I'm just trying to find them.
15.
15.
Did you see six and eight are duplicates? Six and eight?
I don't know if we caught... We did, I don't know if we caught the duplicate yet. Let's see.
Bottom of page five? There we go.
And we did add the... Is the affordable delivery okay that we have? Did you see that? In the revised decision?
Say that again? Just tell me again what it is.
So in the revised decision, you would provide the affordable unit prior to... Prior to the fifth occupancy permit of the townhouses?
Prior to the fifth occupancy. Assuming they're sort of tiered, is it...
What number of condition is that, Rich?
Number 16. Say that again?
Well, there's eight, right?
Right.
So you're saying after the fifth one is occupied, by then, we have to have the affordable unit.
Are you gonna get, like, well, I'm thinking about, you're not gonna get... You're probably giving it stages, right? Each townhouse unit?
Probably gonna get them all done at the same time.
Yeah, you probably would, I suppose, because they're all connected, right?
Yeah.
Hmm. So the... When you tackle...
You could do either like by the time of substantial completion or occupancy permit. You can tie it to either one of those, I guess. But for you guys, it's probably occupancy.
We do it, yeah, we do it in connection with occupancy permit.
Yeah.
But to your point, there really won't be...
Yeah, I won't really be phasing them.
You won't be phasing me that whole...
No. Yeah, it'll be...
Are you... What do you sequence in terms of, did you in the apartments? Like, how do you think you're gonna...
I mean, yes, the immediate construction would be focused on the townhouses.
On townhouses?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, secondarily, would be the historic building.
Okay.
As far as I have it in my mind.
In your mind?
At the moment.
Ms. Jacobson, do you have comments on this?
Thanks. So I just want to make sure you're aware of the timeframe for an affordable.
Oh.
To get it, to get an applicant to run the lottery, to... It's a little bit of a lengthy process.
Yeah.
So I like folks to know that going in, because what I don't like to have happen is you're done, we're telling you that you have to have this occupied by the, you know, fifth occupancy permit, and then you call me and I tell you that it's 90 to 120 days before somebody's in, and the rest of your project is held up. So just keep that in mind.
Oh, so that could actually hold up the occupancy of the eight townhouse units?
Yep.
Yeah.
I see. I see. So maybe we'll do everything in conjunction with each other, so there won't be a townhouse then 15 Rockwood. We'll just do them all at the same time.
Because you were thinking of doing your affordable in the apartments.
Yeah.
In the existing building.
Exactly. So it's a timing, it's a timing element on the construction side, but that's good to know. Yep.
So I need to redraft this condition. That's the...
The other thing I was gonna ask is just to stretch the time to start, although my, you know, my goal is to start as quickly as possible.
Which one is that?
I think it's the... Oh, it's the last one. It's not even a condition, actually. It's just...
Oh, you mean the year?
The one year.
Where are we looking?
It's the last paragraph before signatures.
Oh, yeah, it feels like it's...
Okay. After notice and you pull it, yeah. Right. And it's a pretty aggressive...
Typically see like 24 months, but, you know, I'm open to other suggestions.
You know, just double-check. I just want to look at the... I'm just checking the bylaw to see. I feel like it's embedded in the bylaw. Like, I don't... I don't know if there's an option, although actually, hold on, let me just... All right, so maybe that's... What do you... You said what, two?
24. 24.
24? Geez, I'm not seeing anything in the bylaw, so maybe... I'm just gonna look, I just want to double-check at the... Might be able to do it through the MBTA in terms of... I was looking at the waiver in the BTA. It's more about the underlying district, not the permit. Well, we could do 24 months, I can see.
So you feel that wouldn't contradict anything else by going to 24, by two years?
On the spot? Making, looking through everything? I don't believe so. I don't think so. I think it'd be all... Give me one more second. Sorry.
While Rich is working on that, Stefan, there is a website where you can get... You were talking about trying to find the decorative wood pieces, or whatever it may be, PVC or faux wood for outside. Architecturaldepot.com has tons of... They have wood, they have PVC, they have faux wood, urethane, whatever you need, and it's all really nice.
Give me a do it. If you want to do it, to give, to change it to 24 months?
I mean, I'm not opposed to it as long as it doesn't...
You're gonna end up coming back again.
Let's just say I goofed, right? I'll just have to go back for a hearing. If I goofed on interpretation, you have to come back for a public hearing.
If you want to keep it a year, I'm fine with it. It's just that, you know, it's gonna, I'm gonna eat up six months real quick doing drawings and trying to get my finance in order, and if anything is delayed by any reason, I'm probably gonna be back here in nine months asking for an extension.
Yeah.
So that's the only... That's my only hang.
I get it. I get it, yeah.
If you're fine with that and you'd rather me come back for an extension, I don't know if... Does an extension request require a public hearing, or is that just a...
That's what's in the decision.
My other request would be, I have two others. In 12, in number 12, I would just insert, at the very last sentence, it says, this talks about modifications of any kind, having to come back in. I would just insert and/or, where it says, where it says "further approval of the planning board and/or modification by way of public hearing," I would just insert the word "major" before "modification," because minor modifications typically can come in and...
Don't need a public...
Don't need a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep. That's fair enough. That's fair.
We could change that. Yeah, that makes sense. That's in practice what the board has been doing, so...
Yep.
And then, based on what we just presented with the stormwater, we just asked that 15 be removed completely.
Yeah, so I just, I wanted to talk about that, because I don't want to unilaterally, I mean, I seem to fit the bill for me, it makes sense, but I wanted to hear the board's opinions on that.
No, I'm fine with removing 15. And then we also need to remove eight, because it's a duplicate of six.
Yep.
Yeah.
Danny, good with removing 15? That's the stormwater, the downstream stormwater impact stuff that they showed up there.
Yeah, I mean, I... I mean, if...
I mean, if for some reason we were to determine in the future that it was causing issues there, this would kind of take away our ability to enforce any mitigation. But if everybody feels comfortable that, you know, I'm not a stormwater engineer, I don't know, was the DPW satisfied with that? That response?
He's not. He's not a, he's a, he didn't have, he didn't have the, he wasn't around, so he didn't look at that study to see the mapping in the stormwater system, so I don't know if he's. He's just responding to flooding complaints at that property, at 14 Tucker Road, and just.
Rockwood?
Connect, oh, Rockwood, sorry, 14 Rockwood, and kind of connecting the dots, not looking at the whole stormwater systems. I don't know if he's, I couldn't tell you that he's.
I just have red flags going off, like, all over the place with that one because it just opens us up to a whole host of like, see, you know, like, there's flooding at 14 Rockwood, and then they're like, see, I told you, it's 15 Rockwood. And we just, we just showed definitively that we don't increase the flows on a whole bunch of metrics and a whole bunch of 200-year to 100-year storm events. And so leaving that in there concerns me legally because I think we just show that we're reducing all of our flows, not increasing any flows. So I just don't, I don't, it, and the other piece of it is that I'm gonna be gone at some point, so now I'm, how am I handing this off to other condo unit owners? Like that somehow would have to get embedded in the condo docks, which is, again, legally problematic.
So the, op, you know, alternative option, I guess, is to connect with, I know you're got a little more time with us now.
Back with DPD?
Yeah.
Well, have we, have we discussed this with VEDA? I know Steve Salon, has any of this been discussed with VEDA? And have they had any insight into it?
They haven't directly looked, no, I don't, I'm, Steve, you haven't, it's not something you.
I am aware of the, of the back and forth. I've been CC'd on them, on the emails.
He hasn't weighed in on it, though.
You know, yeah, I haven't officially weighed in on it. I will say that HydroCAD is the, is the standard program used for stormwater modeling. You know, it's used throughout the, the state and, you know, the, a project can still be approved and meet the 10 stormwater standards and still have an increase in volume. So the fact that they have proven that it reduces the flow rates and volumes, I think that does speak, have some weight. We're also dealing with a site that has a lot of gravel and sand. They, you had your health department out there doing the soil test pits for the septic field.
Yep.
And they said it was gravel and sand, which it's not like we're, it's not like the soil's like sea soil and they're relying on like an optimistic infiltration rate. So I, aside from what I'm saying right now, I haven't weighed in officially, but I, I, I would say that there isn't a lot more they could do as far as proving it. It's one of those things that they, they've proven it as far as they can from an engineering perspective. I guess that's what I'll say about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, then.
Gary?
Yep, I, I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, so let's, let's drop 15. And then we're gonna amend that, or we're gonna.
Add.
Adding.
Yeah, we're adding on number 12.
12.
Major modification?
Yep.
Yeah. Between, yeah, so planning board and/or major modification by way of public hearing.
If you want to keep, Rich, if you want to keep the one year because you're not sure if it goes, if it conflicts with anything, let me ask you this, is an extension request a minor modification? So that, I think, is that, that's just an internal, I come into the board and I make the request. I don't think that's a public hearing, right?
Uh, no, we're pretty tough about it, but it's not a public hearing.
So if you wanted to keep it, I'm okay with it, as long as there's a path to, if I need it.
If, we, we need just to revise the decision so it didn't say after new public hearing?
Right, but that's only if it expires. If he comes in before it expires.
Doesn't expire. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you extend it.
Oh, I would come in well before.
So as long as it's launched, it doesn't expire, no.
You threw me off, sorry. You can come in ahead of time.
Yeah. Oh, no, I, yeah, whatever nine months after the appeal period would be, I would probably come in just to be.
Yeah, no, no public hearing if you extend it before it expires.
Okay.
Gary, did you get removing number eight?
So we are gonna remove number eight because it's already been to six. We're gonna edit 12 so that we put major modifications. We're gonna remove 15.
And we're gonna leave.
And we're gonna leave this data on.
Yep.
Okay.
What do, how are we wording the affordable rental unit? Are we keeping that?
Yeah, we gotta talk about, so what number is the affordable, where is the affordable again?
It's, so you have an older version. I made the packets before. And Rich added that.
Gotcha. So it's online?
Yeah.
Uh, can you see?
It's on the screen.
Can you see it?
It's on the screen.
Yeah.
It's number 16, which would probably be the new.
15.
Wow, eight.
That'd really be the new 14.
14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, for all intents and purposes, it's up here at 16.
We need to, we'll renumber, but that's the condition we need to modify it.
The affordable rental unit should be provided prior to the fifth occupancy of the townhomes.
What's, what's the definition of provided? What does that mean?
Occupied.
Occupied?
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we should use that word.
The affordable rental unit shall be.
Yeah.
Occupied prior to the fifth occup.
Well, no, that's not gonna.
So prior to the sale of the fifth townhome, the affordable unit.
Sale?
Correct. Right, Rich?
Oh, that's, that's different, okay.
Yeah, actually, that's not.
Not occupancy, it's sale.
Sale.
Right, so it's, the affordable rental needs to be occupied prior to the sale of the fifth townhome.
Totally fine with that.
All right, so let's reword that then.
Yeah, we need to clarify.
Affordable rental unit shall be occupied prior to the sale of fifth townhome.
Yes.
Townhome.
That makes sense.
And then we're good.
Yes, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Oh, right, it's on this one. It's not on this, it's on this.
It's not on, no, no.
Making your, your acting.
Any other?
She's on Zoom, she's in here.
Any other comments, concerns, edits? Is everybody okay with this? Decision the way it is written? Assuming.
And this one is not a special permit, so it's okay that there's the four of us noted, right?
Right. Well, it's still four, but it's not a special permit.
Wait, do we, do we close the public hearing yet?
I don't know, did we?
They closed the public.
No, no, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we closed it.
Okay, I'm just making sure before we.
Yeah, we asked for public comment, there was.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
I'm a rule follower, I have Robert's rules right here. I don't, I don't misspeak.
Good for you.
You are amazing.
All the formalities.
Mr. Sullivan. Piece of paper just for the video.
I see, I see.
It's blank.
Okay. So are we good with this, assuming we make the edits to the one, two, three conditions of approval on this sheet, plus the one on the original copy? And that's it?
Yep.
Yeah, we're good? All right, so I'll accept a motion to approve. Hold on, here we go.
Decision number 2025-03.
Decision number 2025-03 for 15 Rockwood Road. Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Um, you know, with.
As edited.
As edited, which the edits include removal of condition number eight as a duplicate of six on the physical copy, and edit to number 12 on the physical copy, where we, it is now going to read at the last sentence, the planning board and/or major modification by way of public hearing. We're going to remove condition 15, and we are going to remove the condition on the digital copy.
Edit the condition on.
Edit the condition on the digital copy, which is number 16 of digital copy, to read the affordable rental unit shall be.
Occupied.
Occupied prior to the sale of the fifth townhome.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Mr. Searle, your opinion, I think you said ayes.
I, I guess I'm.
So voted, thank you.
So voted. Okay, approved. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And thanks for doing all that math.
Oh, sure.
So, new business. We have 100 Pond Street, NextGrid Solar Project, request for minor modification of slope stabilization. Rich, what's this about?
The, so we do have Nathan Collins online from NextGrid. So the rear portion of the site, they want to change from a grass slope to a riprap to just fortify essentially.
It's like a stabilization?
Stable, yeah, the slope with riprap versus loam and seed.
It's a pretty steep slope, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are some pictures in here.
Yeah, we do have pictures in the, we'll, we'll put the pictures up.
And I think all the material is being sourced from onsite.
Yeah, material is being sourced onsite.
Yeah, so it's just reusing what's there and.
Yeah.
Nathan, do you have any comments you want to add to this as we pull up these pictures?
Yeah, so that's just an example of what they're, that's not the site.
The puppies.
I don't know, they're cute, though.
The puppies are.
I'm not a cat.
I'm not a cat.
Remember that?
Okay.
Not a cat. No. So I think you kind of know, but that. Either one, that's just to show what they propose to do versus loam and seed, the slope, to stabilize it. I did, you know, Nathan, you know, I, I did. You're on there, right?
He's here.
He's here.
I'm here, yeah, yeah.
All right. In consideration for, you know, thinking about screening from Pond Street. We're still gonna, the board's still gotta do the sidewalk, as you know.
That thing looks fugly right now.
It looks brutal.
It's not too aesthetically pleasing, if you will.
Work in progress.
It's a construction.
Work in, it's a construction site, no, no, I get it.
I've been on a lot of construction sites in the, over the years. Construction site.
Yeah, it's not, it's not visualizing coming out of the ground, you know, yet, but.
Sometimes it.
Takes time.
Gets worse before it gets better.
Yeah.
I think in construction, that's always the case.
So, but for this.
For this, that's what it is, the, the backside.
All right, so I'll ask him again, because you interrupted him for a second. Nathan, if you have any comments.
Oh, sorry.
Feel free to, feel, feel free.
I, I don't, again, just for the record, Nathan Collins, Director of Engineering with NextGrid, I think Rich kind of summarized it well. The original plan that was approved showed a two-to-one slope in that area. Originally called out for slope stabilization fabric and seed, loam and seed. Obviously during construction, that's a very bony site, the contractor approached us of modifying that slope and stabilizing it with the existing onsite riprap and stone that they've compiled during the earthwork process, so. I have, we have not given them approval to do that. We knew, you know, there was a process to come back in front of the board to get that minor amendment approved, and we're, we're really proposing it essentially on their behalf as it was a request by our contractor.
So, so Nathan, are there any other locations on the site where they may come back and propose, request this again?
The, these are the only areas that were proposed at two-to-one. Everything else is, is three-to-one, which is a little, a little easier in the construction world to establish vegetation. Two-to-one can be a challenge, can be a long-term maintenance issue, and certainly riprap would alleviate any potential long-term stabilization of that slope.
Sorry, just, so is the slope actually changing or just the coverage of the slope?
Just the coverage.
Just the coverage.
I guess I just, if it was, if it was always meant to be two-to-one, then wouldn't the issues of how you cover it have existed during the original proposal?
Yeah, I'm not sitting here tonight saying that loam and seed cannot be done. It was simply, in terms of immediate stabilization, riprap is certainly a better alternative. Given that the material is existing onsite, it's a no-cost change proposed from the contractor, so that's why we, we're just bringing it to board for your review and approval. Certainly, by doing the existing contract with our contractor, their, their scope is to loam and seed it with a slope stabilization fabric, so.
But the alternative would be they'd have to truck that offsite. Every nobody uses it on site, so. What's it, do we, what is it, Rich, do you know what's a budding that?
I was just looking that up.
It's a landscape. It's a landscape company?
Woodfields.
Not a landscape company, Specialty Turf, STF.
That's it.
Yeah, so they actually have, on that backside, they stockpile material, so there's loam and seed and gravel, so it's, it's not a, almost like an active yard in terms of material.
I thought I saw a building in that photo.
There's a building closer on the other side towards Shire.
Okay.
I think the, the answer, it's not really gonna impact the butter.
No.
The aesthetics of changing it to riprap should not impact the butter.
No.
No, it's, it's down gradient of that butter, so visually, you should not see it.
That's true, it is, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have my, uh.
I mean, I, I, I like the idea. It's reusing material that's onsite, it's gonna provide a more stable slope. I mean, that, that slope stabilization fabric, yeah, it can be done, but it's always gonna be a kind of a maintenance nightmare. And this is a little more long-term.
It's more stable and it's already there, so it's already settled there.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm for it. I get it.
There's no visual impact to the butters, and I'm looking now, I don't see anything. Then that sounds fine to me. It's also not even that unattractive.
No, riprap's fine, yeah.
No.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns, things we want to dive into more on this?
No, I mean, I would just say, I, I mean, overall, I'm concerned about the amount of clearing that was done on the site, even though I know that's not what's before us, and that was a decision already made by the planning board. If there, you know, if this really is to, to deal with the, make it a more stable site, then that's fine, you know, I just hope it's not a cost-saving measure to, to do that instead of trucking the, the stone offsite as was originally proposed, but, you know, I think looking at this in isolation, it, it makes sense and I'm fine with it.
Okay. Any public comments? So, none? Okay, so we just vote to.
Approve the minor modification.
Approve the minor modification for slope stabilization for, so I will accept the motion to approve the minor modification for slope stabilization at 100 Pond Street for the NextGrid Solar Project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Mr. Searle?
I would vote aye.
Thank you. It is approved. Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
28 Long Meadow Road, discuss potential violation of stormwater management bylaw. This is like the town's favorite subject, right?
I know, right? I saw, you sent a letter or an email, right?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, you read over my email.
I did, yeah.
All right. Well, essentially recap my, you know, I, I did go out with Caitlin Noble, who's the conservation agent, on May 28th, met with the property owner, walked the site, based on, I showed you those arrow images at the last meeting, and it is certainly cleared to those extents, which does trigger the stormwater management permit. The use is, it's 61B, it's open space, it is, there, there are horses on the property, it's not agricultural, so it's not, under the stormwater bylaw, it's not exempted from a stormwater management permit. I instructed the property owner, advised them that it did trigger a stormwater management permit. I asked them to get back to me by June 6th. Acknowledgement, I have not heard back from, I will say, in that same email, I made him aware that the barn he was putting up needed a building permit. He did stop into the building department and is working on, I don't know what stage of it, to get a building permit for that barn. Additionally, said to him that you might have a setback issue with that barn, because it's going to be equal to the height, so he's going to need to provide a survey of that. Conservation, he's before them tomorrow night. As of today, he hasn't responded to them in terms of what I've recapped in this email. So he's said he would do some different things, he hasn't performed yet. Stormwater management bylaw is under your purview as a permanent authority. I think it's, needs to escalate.
Yep.
And that being, I think, to send him a, not quite enforcement letter, but just prior to, that he needs to submit an application to the board within, I, let's see, so is there on the 28th, or 20th? I don't know.
What do you mean by not quite there? Why not just send him a, like, look, you need to do this?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I was going to say enforcement, actually, like, start to invoke fines.
With a fine, yeah. It's a fine, though, right?
Huh?
You stated the fine in your letter.
I did, yeah. So, I mean, certainly could, the only open question I have is, if you want a fine, if you, if you want to move the pathway to start filing now, we could certainly do that, and I would just have to, I believe it'd be consistent with a zoning violation, I got, it has to be issued every day?
Well, I always look at, we have these bylaws, we have rules for play, in place, for a reason. We follow the rules. So if the rules state that now is the time that we need to start fines or whatever, we start the fines. I mean, I just...
So, just playing devil's advocate to that, do we not want to just give them a heads up, like, this is what, this is what the next steps would be? Could you...
We could do that, yeah.
Could you apply for, or at least show up here at our next meeting, but ideally apply for before the meeting, special permit for this, so that we can have a discussion about else, this is, this is...
That's fair, I'm all about, I'm all about being reasonable, and, and if we see that there's a intention to comply, then so be it.
From what I understand, there is a cease and desist from ConCom, which is not being adhered to, so it does not...
So, I mean...
Things aren't lining up in, in favor of what you just said, but at the same time, like, maybe we give a benefit of the doubt and say, listen, didn't know you needed a special permit. Now you know, you know, town planner was out there to talk to you about this, let's get one in front of us by the next meeting, or else...
So, you did talk to the person directly?
Yeah.
And how did, what was the tone? What was, was there pushback, saying, oh, I got the right to do this, or...
Yeah, the, the meeting, the, was that, I'm a farm and, you know, as a farm, I have a lot of latitude to do what I want in terms of as a farm. However, it's, this is not agricultural, so it's not going to, at least my opinion, it's debatable, I suppose, somebody might debate my opinion, obviously, but it's not agricultural, and certainly not agricultural under the stormwater management bylaw.
Yeah.
And clearly, he's violated, because they cited him, he's under cease and desist on the conservation, he's cleared and, and filled in the wetlands and, you know, he's, in terms of the order, the conservation's top, because he's under cease and desist, and he's got to come, he has to come forward with a remediation plan, a restoration plan, excuse me. The restoration plan is being sent to the DEP for their comment, so the conservation's been contacted with, you know, DEP.
So, is there a restoration plan?
There was a restoration plan, but there was inadequate restoration plan in terms of what is being proposed. So the, the conservation agent made comments on it and provided them to the, well, the commission will see them tomorrow night, but then also submitted those comments to the, to DEP.
Okay.
The central region. So what he does in terms of, you know, the restoration is going to sync up with the stormwater permit, too.
So I, I kind, I kind of wish we were having this meeting Thursday, because if the guy's a no-show or, or, you know, causing issues tomorrow, we kind of know how this is going to go, in which case, like, yeah, just start the...
Well, we can, we could, we could discuss and vote a conditional kind of...
Penalty.
Plan.
Okay.
So, we could discuss, like, if, if there is progress and meets these certain things by, by the end of the week, then we just ask him to come to our meeting in July to give us a status update of where he's at, type thing.
Okay.
But if there is no intent to comply to anything, then we start, we start, we start the process.
And the email you said that you gave him till June 6th to let you know whether or not he intends to apply for stormwater permit?
I did, yes.
I think you just give him a deadline to apply for the stormwater permit.
Right.
And then, I mean, I don't know if you can fine retroactively, could you say that if he doesn't submit it by a certain date, the fines will start effective, you know, this, or is it just cleaner to do it moving forward?
I think it'd probably be better moving forward to be clean, but...
I, I was wondering, what took place before you were there? Did he already get contacted by Conservation Commission, he already received letters telling him about fines? He received all that, and then you talked to him, and then, is it, I'm, I'm wondering the sequence of events.
The sequence of it? I mean, this all started back in October last year, and then, then complaints sent, you know, either emailed, phone call, we have combination emails, phone calls, and people come to Town Hall complaining about the activity out there, and then a site visit was done by Caitlin, let's give or take around, it was in December, November timeframe, saw the clearing that was out there, and then, then the commission imposed a cease and desist against them.
And work continued, or?
He continued to do work out there. Yeah.
And that's why we were looking at the pictures the last time, or something, yeah.
Yeah, the cease and desist, I'm not sure if I have, don't quote me on the date when that went into effect, I can tell you, though, he was doing work while the cease and desist was in place, and clearly was doing that. So that was, because when we went on the 28th of May, Caitlin had been there before and could observe the difference between, you know, what was there versus the, the visit from the 28th.
And your letter was, when, when was your letter dated to him with the penalties and stuff in it?
They sent it May 29th.
Oh, the day after, okay.
So this is how the cease and desist from the ConCom, December 5th.
December 5th. Yeah.
December 5th.
Well, that was, okay, I didn't know it was that long ago.
Wow.
Yeah.
So I kind of know how this is going to end.
I'd just start finding them.
Yeah, I was just...
Yeah.
So I, I didn't realize that was December 5th, I thought it was like the last ConCom meeting or something, like...
No, no.
I mean, given that history and the fact that you did say, please comply by this date, there's been no, no compliance, no response, I would just start.
Start now?
Yeah, I would.
The one thing I would say, play devil's advocate, you didn't, you told him just acknowledge whether or not he intended to file, you didn't tell him he had to file by a certain date. I mean, it blew you off either way, but it's not like you told him he had to file.
True.
No, I get it, devil's advocate, for sure, I didn't say, hey...
And if you say ConCom is tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Yes, so I might wait one more day, but I think you could trigger it the day after. You know, who knows, he might show up with an attorney, he might say, look, here's, here's the plan, I revised the plan, maybe he's a great citizen tomorrow night. But I don't know. It just seems like there's, there's something that's important, that has potential of happening tomorrow night, related to it.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Because...
But I wouldn't wait till our next meeting.
Right. I want to walk, exactly, I want to walk away tonight with a plan that goes into effect this week.
Yeah.
And not wait a whole nother month.
Yeah.
And what, and that plan has an option to put it on pause until the next meeting, but he should come into the next meeting and explain what...
What do you think, Melissa? You've been quiet for a minute.
I think sooner rather than later, not next meeting. I, I'm just, I was just thinking about all of the damage that I saw to the property and the trees that were, no way that was on accident, yeah. I just, I don't know. I hope something good happens tomorrow, I'm not really, can we just say, you know, if, if there's no plan as of tomorrow at ConCom, then we start?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Rich, like, what?
Well, he, he did submit a restoration plan, it's not fantastic restoration plan.
But he's not adhering to the cease and desist.
But he's not adhering to...
So it doesn't really matter?
No.
Doesn't really matter.
No. I mean, they did, they did tell him at one point to stop, because it was really raining, it was, you know, and, I'm trying to think when, that was a while back, though, we're talking about months ago.
Here's one of the pictures.
Yeah.
It's like this scene in Return of the Jedi, where like, all the walkers are like shooting all the trees.
Yeah, no, I, I...
The Ewoks are running everywhere. Sorry, I, child of the 80s, I watched a lot of Star Wars when I was growing up.
No, Dan's point, I, but I didn't, I get it, so I would think a hard date is definitely, like...
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, like, for that, I'd start finding them immediately, but I just, I just think, like, for, for building a paper trail, we may want to have something that goes to them, right, like, clearly stated, do you either file your stormwater permit by X day or your fines will kick in.
Yeah.
We'd do that.
Yeah, take it, like, like, it doesn't have to be a big window either, it can be like...
Right, it could be ten weeks from today, or something.
Ten days, I wouldn't do more than 10.
Yeah.
Week to 10 days, max.
So let's say...
End of next week. I mean, the letter gets done, the letter, you know, draft up the letter...
By the 20th.
This week, and...
On the 19th.
And, yeah.
And when you start finding, what stops finding? Because you're finding by the day, how do you, how do you stop it?
Well, I think at this, this level of fine, this fine is going to be contingent upon filing for a stormwater permit.
Yeah.
Because he hasn't even filed, right? So if he files, it would hold the fine.
Stop that clock.
Would stop the, would stop the clock on the fine.
Right.
Okay.
I think that makes sense in a letter to say, you have to file by X date, or else the fine will start to kick in and go until you've filed that permit.
Yep.
Like, you were notified that you were required to file a permit.
Yeah, so if I said, you said 10 days, or...
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, if you draft it, like, if you draft it tomorrow...
Yeah, 10 days from when you mail it.
And you get it out, and give them to Thursday of next week.
Yeah, the 19th of next week.
I'll be a little bit gracious, because it's a holiday next Thursday, but...
It is?
Yeah, June 12th.
Ah, it is, so...
Give them till Monday.
Wow, that's very gracious, Monday, the 23rd, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a plan.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, we don't have to vote on anything, that's just a discussion, it's just a discussion. Anything on 1719 Shire?
Uh, yeah, well, you do need to vote to do the extension for both of those. I know, Dan, this would be all new to you, but Shire Industrial Park, which is actually on the other side, I don't know if you've been up there? I looked, I went on... Okay, all right. We still haven't, the property, the roadway parcels are in Land Court foreclosure to acquire them, we don't have that yet, so we really can't make changes to the subdivision plan to modify it. So there's two, the, the property that abuts this, the cell, the solar, 19 Shire and then 17, they have occupancy temporary for their site plan work, because it ties into the road. So this just extends it to, we have our plan that we can say, this is what the final road's going to be, and then they can match up to it. So that's what that is about, extending the occupancy for both of those properties. And then I'll just touch on the fire station real quick, I might as well. They think they're going to be done by the end of June, but I said, just to be conservative, just we'll extend it to, what does it say in the file? Is it, I think it's July 30th, I don't know. Yeah, it did July 31st, but I would expect them to be done then, but just to...
Okay, and, so, 17 and 19 Shire, what's the extension?
The date?
Yeah.
It's, uh, what do I do? No, I did say end of the year.
Okay.
And, and Rich, just to clarify, that, that's for the site, not the building.
Correct, for the site, both of them for the...
I just wanted to clarify, so Dan understood.
Yeah, they're both for the site, not the building.
Just for the site, not the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments on any of those three? 17 Shire, 19 Shire, or the fire station?
Nope.
Okay, accept the motion to extend temporary occupancy permit for 17 Shire Drive to 123125.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Mr. Searle, your...
I would, I would be voting for that, yes.
Great. 17 Shire Drive, okay, so I will accept the motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit for 17 Shire Drive, again, until December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Searle, your opinion?
I did throw in an aye, I blended in with the rest of the crowd.
So if you say aye, I'm just gonna take it as, we don't need your opinion, we need your vote. What's 17, it's, all right, so Fire Station, voting to extend the temporary occupancy permit for 117 Main Street, Norfolk Fire Station, until July 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, okay.
And CPC, you're doing for another year?
Yes, we already voted, yes?
Yes, we did, yes.
That's right.
Did that earlier.
So Dan, you're off the hook for a whole year.
Gary's got unfinished business.
I have unfinished business.
He does, he does. He has some stuff he wants to do.
He's got unfinished business.
Is Cindy still in charge?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think she's looking to hand it to somebody else.
Oh.
Still in charge. We, we meet this week, so I'll know if that changes.
Do we have minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, minutes, uh, I did... What's in there?
Through those.
Oh, yeah. Sorta kind of in there. The scope for MAPC is in the Share Drive.
Oh, here.
Under Town Center Zoning District Update.
Oh, yes.
So if you'd like to take a look at it, and then, so the idea is to be, hit the ground running in July, so if you see just any comments, email me back individually, and I can make any adjustments.
So we're looking at, okay, all right, never mind, I'll read it and I'll...
This is identifying the updates to B1 zoning bylaws, that, you know, like the pre-work they did on...
So this is actually turn those recommendations into bylaw changes?
Yep.
'Cause we don't like doing that. It takes a long time.
I know.
Okay.
All right.
What, what's the proposed amendments to fee schedule, I forget what that one is.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it.
Not tonight.
No, you don't have to worry about it tonight. We kinda talked about it a couple of months ago, but we don't have the money to...
Can advertise it?
Advertise it, so...
Stay tuned.
We need to increase the fees, 'cause we don't have the money!
Unanticipated business, Judith would like the planning board to vote to disband the master plan...
Oh, yeah.
Steering committee.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we...
Right, we're all done.
Kinda left that one hanging, for the better part.
Well, we didn't know if we might need them again.
Yeah. Now, I know it's not here, we will talk about implementation committee, but just for now, 'cause they're doing, going through the appointments of committees and so forth, so...
That's true, all the people that we had signed up for what's already done, so we'll probably have to recruit for the implementation plan, so...
Yeah, but if the board was obliged and just vote to disband the...
Sure.
I'll accept the motion to formally disband the 2025 Master Plan Steering Committee.
2035?
2035, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. We gotta review it.
Minutes?
Minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes as printed here? I looked at these digitally, I didn't look, look here, but... Okay. If there's no further comment or questions on them, I'll accept the motion to approve the May 20th, 2025, another session meeting minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. We also need to approve the May 20th, 2025 executive session meeting minutes, I'll accept the motion for that.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great. I believe that's it. Right, does anybody have any other unanticipated new business? Or general shenanigans? I don't know, it's okay, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Uh, second, oh.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All those opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.